On June 10th, and I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council Work Session to Order. Councilmember Dunning is with us remotely, but Councilmember Stedman, I think, is excused, but all other council is present. I'm also wanting to acknowledge that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Messon Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. I also have just one quick recommendation. Can you move the agenda items around to have the first quarter financial report go first and the regional budget complex discussion go second?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion carries. We have amended agenda. First thing on our amended agenda is public comment. Is there anyone wishing to address the council? Seeing none. Then let's go into our first amended agenda item, which is our 2025 first quarter financial report and budget outlook.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. You do have in your full packet the detailed first quarter financial report for 2025. I do want to recognize it's about two months past due. Council has had a very busy schedule in terms of work sessions. Also, and probably more importantly, I just want to note that there were no surprises, so we didn't feel an immediate need to come before council, but we obviously want to report this out. So, again, you have the full details in your packet, so I'll have shortened comments on the first quarter results, but I really want to focus on where we're at today, so we're gonna look at some five-month numbers. Pretty high level at that. Do you want to talk about 2025 and 2026 projections? And probably most importantly tonight, we'd like to talk a little bit about our approach for the 2026 budget development. So, I will get right into it. So, we'll start with the first quarter expenditures for the general fund. I'm not gonna go into great detail, like I said. Again, no surprises in terms of the first quarter results. We did spend about $838,000 more in our current expense fund. This is the fund that provides the services I believe our citizens most identify with. The vast majority of this increase, the $838,000 increase, is increases to the cost of labor. We had about a $767,000 increase to the cost of labor. Do you want to show the general fund as a whole? We do have seven funds that make up our general fund. You can see each of them here. You have a comparison with the 24 expenditures through the first quarter compared to the first quarter 2025. We spent about $1.6 million more through the first quarter. If you look at the public safety fund, probably one of the more significant increases, about $592,000 higher. Those are all new expenditures, fully funded by the voter-approved countywide 2/10ths of 1% public safety sales tax, so all of that increase is covered by a funding source. But when you look overall, we're about $1 million higher overall in our general fund. Again, those departments and functions that are labor-driven, that's driving the vast majority of that increase.
Is that on, is it, are we, how are we on schedule from the 2024 budget to the 2025 budget, I mean, in comparison? Obviously, we budgeted more in 2025 for labor than we did in 2024, so are we matching that?
We are right on target, and you'll see that with the five-month, and we'll help confirm that. But yes, we are within budget. These were anticipated increases as we adopt our budget. I want to jump to revenues for the general fund. Here's a very broad summary of the general fund revenues, really broken out into the categories that are summarized in the detailed report in your packet. Revenues comparing first quarters '24 and '25 were about $587,000 lower than last year. A couple of major variances, you could see them there on screen. Service charges are down about $151,000. All of that is basically a reduction to plan check fees. Those fees are down about $239,000. As you know, that's an indicator of future development, future property tax increase, sales tax increase, utility tax increases, so we're watching that very carefully. We're still within budget there, but we're definitely down compared to same time last year. Other revenues is the, makes up the remainder of that decrease. This is really a function of our investments, kind of two things happening there. Every year, we have to, as part of our year-end process, we have to do a market analysis of the value of our investments, and we make adjustments accordingly. So depending on what's happening in the markets, depending on the interest rates of the instruments we hold, will cause either a plus or a negative on the valuation. In this case, we actually had a decrease in, or reversal of that market adjustment, so that impacted that dollar by just under $400,000. So that's really a non-cash impact, so we could, even though we report it, we could ignore it in terms of our impacts to cash and revenues. But when you do look at interest revenues, we're down about $128,000 through the first quarter. Most of that is really a function of declining principal balance. As you know, we transferred quite a bit of money out into our capital funds for the police station, so we're earning less just because we have less invested within the general fund. So that makes up the majority of the difference in revenues. You know, the good news is, you know, even though we're seeing slower growth and some declines, you know, again, these are all within budget, fully expected in terms of what's happening.
Once that happens, Troy, do they become realized, or they?
They should not, and hopefully, we will never suggest we do that. So, we keep our investments to maturity, which means the face value, the interest rate that is attached to those investments. As long as we hold those investments to maturity, we'll never take a loss. We'll never take a gain on that or experience a gain on that. It's only if we have to sell prior to the maturity date, that's when that market analysis comes into effect. So, let's say, for example, we're holding a 3% interest instrument, and we need the money for some reason, an emergency arises, or just something unforeseen, and we need to sell the, an investment today, and let's say that interest, market interest is at 4%. Nobody should pay us full value for our 3% instrument when they could go anywhere else and get 4%. So in order for us to sell that, we're gonna have to sell at a discount, and that's the measurement of that market loss in that case.
But when we, when we transfer those dollars, right, and we make $120,000 less in interest as a consequence of that transfer?
Only if we do that. Like, this is just only the possible loss, but we will never receive that. We just have to show the book loss if we did right now, but we won't do it, right?
We've never done it.
Never done it, you know?
And hopefully, never will.
But you, you do have to show it, because that would be a current loss if you would do that.
Transfer the dollars.
Right? If you were to transfer dollars and go out early, but we're not going to do that, so.
It's, it's really about valuation and our financial position and our financial statements. It's a snapshot in time on December 31st of each year. We do a very in-depth market analysis. Our investment advisor helps us with that as well. So, again, it's really a paper loss or paper gain, depending on what's happening, but I would never expect to have either one to occur. Do you want to show the full general fund? So you're seeing the other, all seven funds again, and overall, we have a $57,000 decrease compared to the same time period in 2024. Majority of that difference, or really offsetting that, is, again, the new sales tax, the 2/10ths of 1% sales tax dedicated to public safety. You see an increase there of just under $613,000. So really, when you, you know, take out the impact of that, we're about $670,000 lower. But again, I go back to the previous slide, a lot of that is in that investment adjustment, as well as interest earnings being down as a whole. Do you want to talk about the utilities just briefly, just so, again, everything's within budget, no surprises. Here are the three utilities in terms of our operating revenues. Like I said, pretty much as expected. Water sales have an increase of about $547,000. Again, that's really consistent with the rate increases. The wastewater utility, we're seeing wastewater sales with an increase of about $354,000, again, within the range of expectation in terms of the rate increases. The lot increase within the wastewater utility is about $275,000, and when we look at stormwater, we have an increase of about $68,000 in, in stormwater fees, again, within the expectations of rate increases. On expenditure side, same thing, good news for the utilities. Expenditures are being spent as expected. You know, you're seeing a pretty significant difference in the water utility operations. That is really related to the meters that were backordered, and those purchases that come through. So that's about an $800,000 increase. Again, a lot of that was from orders from 12 months, 18 months ago, that are all happening this year. So let's talk about what's happening now, the more, you know, relevant information. Really gonna focus on taxes within our general fund and our major, most significant expenditure source, the cost of labor. Both, incidentally, are about 2/3 of the general fund budget, so our taxes make up about 68% of all general fund revenues, or operating revenues, and then the cost of labor is about, it's historically been 2/3, so it's a write of that, 66%, 67% of all operating expenditures. So, just have a few things to look at, but it covers the vast majority of the general fund activity. So, we'll look at sales tax first. Of course, you get the monthly reports from me, so this is really just a review, but the first five months, you see there at the top in red, just over $6.4 million in collections of sales tax. Below that, you have a comparison with a five-year average, so the five-year average is from 2020 through 2024, and then you have the individual years in terms of sales tax. Through the first five months compared to last year, same time period, sales taxes are down about $272,000. We are still within our budget projection. We've had 12 straight months of sales tax decline, as you know, but anticipated, and as we made that projection, we took that trajectory. So the good news is, although we have significant decreases there, still within that budget projection, but we're, we're very close to the point where we'll be talking about, do we take action? So we're, if all things go the same way in terms of collections from last year going forward, we have maybe one more month of decline before we start having that discussion about, are we going to stay at a break even, or are we actually gonna see sales taxes fall below the projections within the budget?
How is BNO tax going? Remember, that was the big sort of outlier that we couldn't...
It is. It's the same trajectory, basically, and as we've talked, some of it's really anecdotal, but we think the service industry is the thing that's driving some of that increase in BNO taxes. For the most part, services are not taxed, retail sales tax applicable, so there is a difference in there, you know, and when you think about the recovery coming out of the pandemic, service industry was very heavily hit, especially in our economy. So I think that's the major difference we're seeing here in the last couple of years in BNO tax.
I mean, if you, if you take out, you know, 2024, I mean, our 2025 numbers would be the second-best sale, first five months of sales tax in the history of Lacey. So you put, you put in perspective, but I get where we're going. We're not seeing the, the record month after month gains like we did, you know?
For several years in a row.
For the fast, you know, four years, five years prior.
And that was with several empty buildings, right, that are potentially gonna get filled?
But I think what you're seeing is what we've been talking about for, for the last 12, 18 months, is a lot of that growth, month over month, that we, you know, had new highs, was based off of a lot of our development activity and population growth. And as we've talked about anticipating, we're gonna start seeing that flatten out plateau, and I think we're seeing that right now, what we've been talking about, and anticipating, which is why going into 2020 budget, we had a revenue projection that was lower than past, just to check and see. And yes, we are confirmed that that's the pattern we're seeing right now.
So in terms of the budget comparison, this is basically a slide that, same years, same five-year average. I'm really looking at percentage of budget spent through the first five months, really to get an indication of how we're doing in terms of the actual budget. We're pretty well in line. I will say that for sales tax, you know, if you look at being 41% collected of, as of, you know, the first five months, straight line, we're, we're pretty much there. You know, you're looking at about an 8% per month, so you'd expect to be around 40, 41% straight line. But, you know, our sales tax throughout the year is very cyclical. You have the holiday shopping season that, that impacts sales tax, which should be in these numbers, where we collect sales taxes two months in arrears. So the first five months is actually just November, December, and the first three months of 2025, that's...
Okay, so this is, you are using, okay.
Yep, so, and then, so you'd expect to collect that a little bit higher than the straight line just because of those holiday sales, but we also collect quite a bit during the summer, you know, as we discovered, or...
June anomaly, or?
The anomaly that happens in June, which I still cannot explain, by the way, but we have a little bit of a spike in June, and of course, we have the, the summer construction season that impacts sales tax as well, and we go down a little bit in the fall after back-to-school shopping, and then right back up with holiday shopping. So, again, we're within budget, but, you know, we need to keep an eye on this, just because you could see that historically, we've collected more than a straight-line sales tax in terms of percentage of budget through this, this period of time.
Troy, I noticed in, the biggest hit was in specialty trade contractors. What, who are those?
So specialty trade is primarily, think of subcontractors in construction, roofer, drywall. Also, within that category is, you know, like, is home improvement or home renovation. So, construction is, think about new buildings, new construction, but there's subcategories within that as well. So anytime a contractor might have a sub, they typically fall into that, that category.
Is this like because the, the, the single family is, is down, but because the multifamily is seemingly up?
I think that's part of it. I think we're also comparing to a much different period. I mean, think about what we were doing during the pandemic. We're staying at home, we were, we're fixing our backyards up, we were doing home improvement projects because we really couldn't leave. So, yeah, there was a lot of that activity. I think we're really comparing to that, so it's not exactly a fair comparison, if I had to say so.
Yeah, that was just the biggest one, so I just thought, let's ask about that.
I'm looking at utility tax. This is an area that continues to grow at a faster pace than we project. You think about growth within our community, you talk about that multifamily, and, as well as, we've had utility rate increases higher than inflation. I think, you know, PSC's had some significant increases in terms of electricity, natural gas. Our own utilities have had pretty significant increases, so that's, that's driving some of that increase. So, the comparison between '25 and '24 in terms of the first four months were plus $400,000. The majority of that comes from electricity, that's about $150,000 increase in the first five months. Natural gas increase is about $145,000. City utilities is about $92,000, so pretty even spread, you know, some good diversity in terms of seeing those increases in utility tax.
I think a big part of that is the, the population growth number we put in for that utility tax increase rates was considerably less than the actuals. I was just looking just very recently at what our 2020 census numbers are compared to where we are just five years later, and we've grown, you know, 7,000 people.
Addictions and...
Just, it's, we've seen just a tremendous amount of growth, and so, that is, that wasn't reflected in, in what we used for our historic number of, for the population increase.
Correct, yeah. Good point. Again, you know, wanted to kind of check in and see where we were in terms of percentage of budget, and for utility tax, we're right in that, that comfortable range in terms of our historic collection rates through the first five months, so no concerns there. So I want to talk about interest earnings. You know, we did talk about there being actual decreases to interest earnings. Same, a little bit different look at interest versus the other tax sources for the general fund, but, you know, we're definitely down. You know, we're down about $240,000 through the first five months, but again, as expected. We knew we would have lower principal amounts just because of the amount of reserves we use for the police station, but we are actually ahead of budget in, in this category. When we were looking at the economy and what might happen last fall, there was full expectations we would see a continuing decrease in interest rates, and that has not happened the first five months. In fact, there's fairly low expectations compared to where we were last year. I do think we're going to have rate decreases, it's a matter of when. I think we're sooner than later. I think last time we spoke, it was later than sooner, but I think the current state is, we're going to see the Federal Reserve take action. What I'm hearing and what I'm reading is not in June, but soon.
Saying that, you know, oh yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna shimmy a quarter or a half, and then every, and every time they meet, they're like, ah, we're gonna leave it alone. And that's been for like, a year now.
Yeah, it's, it's made all of our jobs harder in terms of projecting what might happen, but...
I still would rather have the interest earnings go down on this and have the interest costs go down for everyone else, because that's what's holding us back on construction. I mean, that, there's, that is the big deal, and that's why you usually see this big, I think, one of the reasons you see the bump in June, is because it takes a couple of months of planning to get ready to construction. A lot of construction happens in June, and that's when the big dollars start going out. And I know, I'm in that circumstance in, in one of my locations right now, sit down and doing a major remodel, but, because this is the time it took to get everything, all the ducks in a row. So, I'd rather, you know, interest rates drop, and I think more spending would happen, because that, that spending has a bigger impact on our overall budget than what we're making in interest.
Than the interest dollars we're getting, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be an interesting thing to watch. You know, the 30-year rates, 30-year mortgage rates didn't act normal at the beginning of the year, and we hope that changes, but you know, that's, the 30-year rate is really an indication of confidence going forward. So if there's less confidence out there and less stability, you know, investors are less likely to look that long-term just because of that. So, you know, hopefully, we see that, that shift as well, because, yeah, I think the mayor's right, it's, it's really holding back the economy. In terms of straight line to the end of year in terms of interest, all things being equal, will probably be around $600,000 lower than last year in interest earnings, but again, within budget, you know?
What do we, what do we project we would be?
We projected we would be around $1.3 million, so...
Yeah, so we're doing pretty good.
We are. So, yeah, we're, we're more than half, and we're only 5/12 of the way through the year. Want to switch to the other side of our ledger and talk about the cost of labor. If you look at the first, it's same information, five-year history, five-year average. If we look at the '25 versus '24, first five months, our general fund labor is about $1.1 million higher, and I do need to point out that one of our major labor groups remains unsettled in '25, so there were no cost of living adjustments for that labor group, so that $1.1 million is probably on the low side.
Do we retro that? I'm sorry?
Do we retro that? We do.
So the, at this point, straight-line projection with a little bit of adjustment for that settlement of that contract, labor may be as high as $3.5 million higher in '25 than '24. That really continues a trend. I mean, you know, we talked about this at your retreat and at year-end, and basically every quarterly report, but we had about a $4.1 million increase in 2024, about a $5.8 million increase in 2023. So, you know, certainly something we're keeping a very close eye on, you know, we've said this 100 times, that, you know, this is our most important asset, but it's easily our most expensive one to maintain.
Troy, this might be a Leilani question, but do we, we have like market survey data on how our salaries shape up against other comparable jurisdictions, right?
We do. We have a list of comparable cities and, and comparable salaries.
How do we do?
We're very, very competitive in that comparable market.
Same thing, checking in in terms of percentage of budget spent. We're right in that range. These increases were anticipated and fully budgeted for, so despite the, you know, the high increase, we did accommodate that within our, in our budgeting. So, want to kind of switch direction and talk about 2025, 2026 financial outlook. I'll, I'll let, you know, Rick kind of take over here to kind of set the table for the, the next discussion.
Yeah, I just want to take a few minutes, and, because as we go through that first-quarter report, and really, thank you, Troy, for going to the year-to-date current, where we are in our budget, and as you can see, we are starting to experience that, what we were expecting, where we're pat-owing in those revenues, but of course, our operational costs keep going up. So I want to take this opportunity to kind of take this, to kind of check back into what we kind of project for 2026 and the budgeting process. You know, we had a conversation at the January retreat about future projections and, and, you know, ways that we can start looking at strategies to, to either expand or increase revenues. And again, going in this budget process, one of, part of the conversation last January was monitoring where we are. And so this is, kind of gives that good snapshot, and it's a good timing, and we're gonna take this time to really just set that stage. One of the things is the executive team, the directors, we all, a couple of weeks ago, sat down and went through this information in preparation for the, the budget season and looking at what that's going to look like going forward. And again, we just want to take this opportunity right now to inform council and answer any questions the council may have. So Troy will go through a little bit of those projections that we see, and then I'll wrap up with kind of what our approach is going to be in looking at the, the budget process this coming season.
Okay, thank you, Rick. So want to, as you know, as Rick stated, we went through, you know, great detail in terms of financial modeling at the end of January, your, at your retreat. I refreshed the model using 2024 actuals, you know, as a reminder to the council, we were looking at 2024 budget at, at that point, so we have a lot more solid information as to what actually occurred in 2024. Kind of want to walk through really quickly the assumptions within the model. You know, these are, like I said, these are the sales tax assumption, or the tax assumptions. Again, that's about 68% of the general fund's operating budget. So for sales tax, the model assumes no increase to sales tax in 2026, a 2% per year for the remaining four years, so '27 through 2030. Property tax in 2026, the model assumes $150 million of new construction being added. The year is following, $75 million per year. It does assume that the council will exercise its 1% revenue limit, increase the property tax. Utility tax assumes a 3% per year, plus a growth factor, and other taxes, which is business and occupation tax, emission tax and gambling tax, the assumption is 3% per year for that five-year period. I want to go back one slide. Altogether, the increase... I want to go back one slide. Altogether, the increase from these tax sources only is about $4.2 million of growth in that five-year period that we're going to look So expenditures, again, really going to focus on our largest expenditure, about 66% of our operating budget. The model assumes 4% per year for salaries. To give some, you know, perspective on that, our 10-year average for salary growth is 7.2% per year. So 4% is actually under the 10-year average. That 10-year average, I took out to 2020. We've had a decrease to the cost of labor because we froze positions because of the pandemic and not sure what was going to happen there. So technically, that's a nine-year average.
Yeah. And then we had some historically high growth numbers in there when it came to labor that everyone experienced that. I'm not sure if we're going to see again for a while either.
Hopefully not, actually. That was, like you said, it was all based on COLA or inflation numbers that were historic highs. And so, yeah. Terms of benefits, the model assumes a 6% per year increase. The 10-year average, again, minus 2020, was 7% per year. But in terms of the first five months of 2025, salaries are up 6.8%, benefits are up 8.1%. So again, just, you know, although the model, we try to be conservative, we're definitely under what we've seen historically and what we're seeing this year. The model assumes that 100% of the council authorized budget will be spent in each year. And just to give you an idea and some other factors within the expenditure side of the general fund, general inflation is 3% per year, so supplies, professional services, contracts going up 3%. Our own cost of utilities, you know, we pay electricity, we pay for natural gas throughout the city. That increase is 4%. And then we're assuming a 5% increase to internal service charges. That's really tied to the cost of labor. So slightly higher inflationary rate for that type of service.
I understand why you're doing this for budget purposes. But have we ever spent 100% of our authorized budget?
Not. It's about 95%. Some years, we spend 97. Sometimes it's 92.
What's the difference in what's in real life difference?
Oh, it's probably in that 5 million range. We had a an interesting conversation at a mini director's retreat that gets exactly to your question. I was trying to find a decent answer, and I can't. And I won't, I wouldn't recommend we go away from the small thing, but.
I totally understand why you do it.
Day that we over over budget is the day we spend our full budget, right? Like, that's just gonna have a little bit of cushion.
You have, if it's, if you authorize it to spend it, then you have to assume you're going to spend it. But, you know, that's not what.
And you have to, by law, have a balanced budget.
You have to have a balanced budget, but, you know.
And we tried, we tried to talk about a way to figure out how to look at that and what is that average. But it's very complicated because some years you may have 95% of the budget spent, and some years it may be.
I was just, I was more curious of what that number on average somewhat, you know, is. You know, 95%, I think that's.
And the other way to look at it, too, is what is your existing, positions is one of the easiest way to look at that. You have position turnover. So there's always some leg time and time off the books before you get somebody replaced. But it's when you're adding cost in addition to what you're currently having or stable. And that's where you're trying to balance those two pieces. Because if you're adding cost, then you got to figure out how you're going to cover that future cost versus trying to establish the status quo.
Yeah, the question I posed to the to the my fellow directors was, yeah, I think we could all agree that we don't spend 100%. But to get down to that 95%, each of one of us would have to cut 5% from our budgets. And to identify that seems really, really challenging and difficult. So.
I I get it. And then to do it, and then, yeah.
But it's a it's a really good acknowledgement, especially this next slide.
Well, yeah, that's me. I'm trying to put things in the perspective a little bit here.
Appreciate that, yeah. So this is the five-year model looking forward. So, you know, I'm the first to admit that I am much better at telling you what happened in terms of our budget than I am predicting the future.
Isn't everyone?
You know, to the mayor's point, we have to recognize that expenditures aren't going to be as as high, hopefully. And also, we won't let this happen.
Yeah.
We're going to react. We're going to be, you know, good stewards of public money. We're, you know, we're in the business of providing service. So, you know, we have to consider all those as we as we look at these kind of shocking numbers. But, you know, next year's model, without the obligations that we know that are coming, and I'll get to those obligations, you know, it's a 4.6, almost $4.7 million deficit being projected. But, you know, I don't want to diminish the the concern that we have in looking at this. You know, if you look at our general fund labor, it's already over a million higher than last year, $3.5 million, you know, straight line projection for the end of the year. We have revenues that are actually decreased compared to last year. So, I mean, that's really what we're looking at. To really put things in perspective, if we have a $3.5 million increase in the cost of labor year in, year out, if we look at property tax, there's not a lot of room to grow there because of the the 1% revenue limit. So for sales tax to increase 3.5 million per year to break even with the cost of labor, that's a 22-ish percent increase every year to sales tax. And I don't think there's anyone ever predict that, especially if, you know, the trend we're seeing. So, you know, I, again, when I say this isn't our reality, there are definitely concerns in terms of looking at what's happening on the expenditure side and anticipate a growth to to taxes going forward. So that's why we look at this this way. And, you know, I appreciate the council's support and acknowledgement that as we look at this, it's a tool to use. But, you know, we do need to be mindful of kind of the structural problem we have in terms of limitations to grow to revenues and taxes versus what we're seeing actually occurring in the cost of labor. So do want to talk about some long-term considerations that we know are going to happen. You know, we're building Keel Phase 1A as we speak. We know there's going to be increased maintenance costs for that development. We have a very rough estimate where the model assumes about $162,000 per year increase to maintain that park. That's about one-third the cost of Rainier Vista's maintenance. So that's kind of the basis we used. We.
That's only for 1A, though, correct?
Correct, first phase, yep. We have very new information. As of yesterday, the Supreme Court actually filed its order on indigent defense. It's a little bit of good news, a little bit of bad news. The the good news is we have a full 10 years to implement the provisions of that instead of a three-year phase-in or two-year phase-in roughly. But we are still going to see those misdemeanor cap at 120 per year, down from about 400 now. So we're talking about three times the cost to provide indigent defense. We're still deciphering.
We need more lawyers.
That's exactly right.
And support investigators. It's not just the the attorneys, it's all the support staff that goes along with that.
We're still deciphering a little bit. Like I said, the order just was filed yesterday. So more to come. But we do know that it does allow for a 10-year implementation. We as from a staff perspective, was certainly proposed that we take the full 10 years, especially since we think this is going to be roughly triple the cost over this 10-year period. But this does go into effect, and we must start implementing January 1 of 2026.
So we have 10, I get we have 10 years to implement. Do we have, are there points along that 10 years that you have to meet? Or is it, can it all happen at the 10-year mark?
It talks about reasonable implementation period.
So we can't wait. You can't wait 10 years to implement. We have to start implementing over the course of the 10 years.
So we're anticipating, you know, roughly 10% per year, so around 80,000 per year.
But they haven't set any milestones in stone.
Yeah, that's that's kind of the more to come piece of what this actually looks like. But.
How they define what's reasonable in that in that phasing in.
If I if I could, maybe just add a little bit more is they they have set some milestones. It has to be a reduction annually of at least 10% the difference. And so we do have to hit those thresholds.
So we'll start to see that impact next year, and we will obviously consider that in terms of our development of the 2026 budget. We do have some costs associated with maintaining the new police station and training facility. We think, you know, full operation and as we get out there a few years, it's going to be right around a half million per year to maintain the facility and the grounds. You know, that's going to be kind of a phase in. It's going to be a brand-new building, but it's going to become a liability pretty quickly. That's the way I look at it. It's something to maintain. So.
Is this half million in addition to the current MNO, like, expense that we have paid? So this is.
It is. Yeah, it's that's based on about 25% of what it costs to maintain City Hall.
It's utilities and everything, though, right?
Inner tower, yeah, custodial.
Yeah.
So we don't know what any possible reimbursements that can be made to help offset some of these costs, especially on the training side.
We're working on it. The chief and his team are working on putting together what that user contract would look like and fees. But again, it's not going to be full cost of the training facility. It's going to probably be a third. Then, again, continue to work with the state legislature to see about the training accounting to come in as to also help offset some of that cost. But nothing's set in stone yet. We'll be working on that through the end of the year and as we get ready to open up the facility.
And then the final long-term consideration that we have is the RAC Phase 3, which will be your next topic. The parks comp plan assumed 350,000 per year for maintenance of that next phase. But that's off in the distance there in 2028. So inputting these considerations in the model changes it, of course. There's, you know, increases in terms of on the expenditure side. Again, you know, kind of the same comments from the the previous slide. But also, you know, since we have that 10 years in terms of implementation of the Supreme Court order, again, this assumes that implementation in fully fully implemented in 2027. So you're going to see that spread over a 10-year So I'll turn things over to Rick for some closing comments on 2026 budget approach.
Yeah, so there you go. There's the the financial situation. Thank you, Troy, for going through all that. And a lot of it, quite honestly, it's not changed since our January retreat. It's kind of getting a little bit more in focus. There was some thought that maybe there might be some trends that may improve for the better. But it's pretty much what we projected. I won't go in much more about the financial situation, but one of the challenges that, you know, about this situation is, in the past, when we try to go through these kind of challenges, it's been a result of some type of disruption in like 2008 recession. We thought we were going to see that in the pandemics we prepared for, but it didn't happen. And so we ended up not having to take those those actions. But this is really just a product of several things. One is, as we talked about earlier, some of our tax revenues that are tied to growth and development are plateauing. So we're now starting to see a little bit more stabilized returns on those types of revenue, sales tax specifically. We haven't had a lot of substantial expansion of our brick and mortar, as we all know, since roughly 2008, that brick and mortar commercial. Part of that 2008 recession, it changed and recalibrated how retail happens in the in the country. And so it's a whole different model nowadays. And it's and then also the lack of some key properties not developing over the last 20, 25 years. And, you know, what was used to be the Campbell property, then the Gateway, now the Queen Louvre, that's a property that we haven't realized either over the 20, 25 years, which has been key to our long-term economic development strategy and back in planning in the early 90s. So there's a lot of the factors that's now starting to catch up. And and again, it's it's the revenue structure in the state of Washington. So going into this budget, again, we had a really good budget retreat with the the director team and talked about these issues, talked about our staffing concerns at this point, and how do we continue to meet some council priorities, but also maintain those core services. But going into this budget session is really going to be focused on a commitment to support our existing staff and keeping the continuity of those core functions. We want to make sure we're able to provide the the public, the public the services that that they need to have to carry out their day-to-day lives, as well as, again, really focusing on making sure we can maintain our staffing as it is. The, again, as I mentioned, we faced these similar financial issues in the past, and we were able to do so without direct layoffs. And that's, I think, we believe we'll be able to do that still going forward. I do want to note, though, in 2008, we did, Troy and I were talking about, we did eliminate positions through attrition, about 10 positions at that time. But even that is a big step because it takes many years to recover those positions over time as well. And some of those positions we dealt in eliminating because of retirements or other actions. I think we just made everything whole, you know, a couple of years ago. So that does have some long-term effects on the organization, too. So again, talking about this and trying to next steps, we're going to work as a team to help balance this 2026 budget and also develop strategies to increase those revenues. This goes right off of the conversation we had at the retreat with that financial package. There's some short-term opportunities the council is looking at considering, some of those fee and and tax revenue increase or expansions. And we're going to be looking to bring some of those proposals to council in August for the fees and technology, or convenience technology fees, as well as records fees. And then in in September, potentially bringing in some of those other elements, such as BNO tax, looking at those elements, gambling tax and the like. So we are going to try to bring those packages while we're going through this budgetary process. In looking at organizational needs, again, we're going to be focused on maintaining what we can currently. And then those obligations we see coming on that Troy just went over with the Kewa Park Phase 1A and the police station, as well as this new decision from the Supreme Court. But any other requests, we're going to have to have some direct funding tied to it or be strategic in creating revenue streams in the future. And that goes back to looking, investing in some of our economic development activities. If you need to do some key infrastructure to help facilitate investment in the community for development, those type of programs. And again, work with the city council, continue that conversation with city council to align those council priorities, community priorities and programs with our current financial. This is going to be ongoing conversation between the council and the staff and making sure those things are aligned so that we are continue to be that good public stewards and deliver good service. And then finally, through this whole process, because there's a lot of speculation can occur, we're going to strive to communicate regularly with council and the organization itself with updates as we get new information, if we see anomalies pop up, and if we have to take any different types of action going forward, that we communicate that so everybody is aware of what's going on. And with that, that's really what we're looking at going in. It's going to be another tough budget budget year. We had the same thing last year. But again, balancing the 2025 budget, it was based off a lot of years of good fiscal management, that we were in a good position. And we still have time to try to address this long-term financial puzzle with our operational costs going forward. So again, it's going to be a lot of hard work, but I think we can get there at the end of this year and still set us up for 2027 and beyond with some strategies that we can incorporate through council and director action.
Any questions?
A lot to digest.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So next up on our agenda is the RAC Phase 3 funding and design concepts and discussion.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to talk about the regional athletic complex. We actually have two presentations tonight. The first one will be focused on PFT funding and finances, and the second one will focus on the concept plans. So I'm going to zip through some quick introductions, and then the consultants will be able to spend a little more time introducing themselves on the the next set of slides. So here tonight, of course, we have Troy Wu, our Finance Director, myself, Parks Culture Recreation Director, Brett Boogert, our Public Works Capital Projects Engineer. Also want to thank Ashley Smith, Design Manager, for being here, and Bogdan also for coming. I have a lot of thank yous for Public Works. I have a lot of thank yous for Public Works, Jamie Oakland, Julie McFadden, Scott Devlin and Scott Agar for their help with this project, and then also my staff, Sue Faelash, Jenny Wilson and Sean Finney. We've got John McNamara here with us with SCJ Alliance, Troy Bishop is with ALSC Architects, and Drew Leeper with ALSC as well. The intent for tonight is to make sure council understands the PFD extension and the RAC Phase Three options and to be able to have a chance to have a discussion, so we're not looking for action tonight, official action. So I wanted to just go back in time a little bit and provide a reminder of where we were a year ago. Here you see the full RAC property with Silicon Road running east-west along the north boundary, and then you've got Marvin intersecting the RAC property with the current RAC on the east side or the right side of your screen, and then the undeveloped portion on the west. So if you'll recall, back in April of 2024, the staff recommendation at that time was to pursue focusing the design for RAC Phase Three over there on the west side with the fast pitch baseball softball focus and also pursue conversion of current RAC soccer field number two from natural grass to synthetic turf with lights and the addition of bleachers in order to fulfill current needs. So council was supportive of the staff direction and also wanted us to look at a soccer option on the Phase Three or the west side there property, which we've done. And council also agreed that maintenance and operation would be very, very important so that the RAC could be sustainable in the long term. If you recall, you did the mentee poll, the weigh-in on the percentage of capital as compared to M and O. So we have gone forth with doing this work of developing a master plan. And as you know, with master plans, you look at the overall vision and long-term vision for that and then the guiding principles of the project and determine the next best steps as we did with the Greg Cuyahoga Park Master Plan and then breaking that in out into the Phase 1A. So you'll see a little bit of a different recommendation here. Whoops, let me go back. Here tonight, so after having gone through the process, we're going to recommend to focus for that first feasible step in realizing that long-term vision is really to focus on the soccer improvements, not just soccer, but that's football, lacrosse, et cetera, on the east side or current RAC. And the reason for this will become clear as we talk through the public facilities district funding, review, the design process, and we'll look at the the estimates coming in. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and kick it over to Troy to discuss the PFD and the finances, and then we'll hear from the consultants after that.
Thank you, Jen. Apologize, council, that was not much of a break away from me, but I'm back. So I want to talk about the new extension. So when we think about public facility district sales tax, that was originally a 25-year authorization that began in the early 2000s. We had the first 15-year extension granted by the state in about 2017. And then we just very recently, I think, actually middle of May, had the governor sign in House Bill 1109 that gave us yet another 15-year extension. So this is a 55-year period now that we're talking about. So we're very, you know, grateful for that in terms of our ability to improve the RAC as well as operate the RAC into the future. So I do want to show, you know, kind of an update from what you saw, you know, about a year ago in terms of Regional Athletic Complex operating revenue and expenditure projections. This is a 35-year look. If you remember my comments from earlier in terms of predicting the future, it gets even worse when you go out 35 years. It just gets harder and harder. Obviously, we've become less accurate as we go out further. I chose 30 years because the full 55-year authorization for the tax will expire in 2057. I extended that two years just so we could see what happens if that sales tax authorization does indeed expire in 2057. So you could see that that, you know, same thing that's happening overall in our general fund expenditures are projected to outpace the revenue growth. In terms of what we're seeing here currently in 2025, it's about a $1.5 million budget total. That includes both the maintenance and operation of the facility as well as the recreational side, the renting out of the fields, league play and tournaments and that sort of thing. And so when you think about that $1.5 million, only about $560,000 or so is recouped through the fees, rental fees, shelter fees, concessions, all of that in terms of the activity, recreation activity that happens at the RAC. Only about 38% of the costs are recovered through those fees. The rest is subsidized. Currently in 2025, the RAC is subsidized by the public facility district sales tax of about $450,000. The general fund itself subsidizes the RAC operations from taxes, so to speak, about $288,000. And lodging tax provides about $180,000 of funding for the RAC on an annual basis. So again, it's about a 60-40 split in terms of operations providing for itself as well as subsidy. If you look at the RAC, the vast majority of that $1.5 million goes towards the actual maintenance of the facility. About $1.2 million of the 1.5 is directly just operations, you know, the lights, taking care of the fields, that sort of thing. So about 83% of the budget goes towards that. Only about 17% goes towards the kind of the RAC side of that in terms of scheduling out the RAC. I think we've all recognized that this is really a community park. You go to the RAC on any day of the week and it is heavily used as community park. So it makes sense in terms of the the general fund support for that facility.
And we obviously never look at any other parks and say, what's the maintenance and cost of this park compared to the rest of it? Only in only in this park do we show what the deficit is. So that's just for the record.
And the only reason for it is because of that PFD connotation to it. And that's always a question that comes up.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had, I don't think anyone on council's ever had an issue with it being a general fund expense. I mean, it's it's a park.
So here's a projection of public facility district sales tax going out 30 years. The assumption I made was a 2% growth rate for sales tax. This is a countywide tax, you know, just for the, to remind the council and the public, this is a 0.333 sales tax credit against the state portion of the sales tax. So you think about sales tax in Lacey, we have a 9.7% sales tax rate, 6.5% of the 9.7 is the state portion. So that 0.0333% comes out of the 6.5. It actually was not a sales tax increase in 2002. In a sense, the the state lowered their sales tax by that that percentage.
It's not county-wide, it's within the public facilities district, which is Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water.
Correct, correct. You're right. So looking forward, when we get to the end of this 55-year period, the projection is we'll collect 3.2 million. And this is the Lacey portion only. So per the interlocal agreement, Lacey currently receives 71.77% of the public facility district sales tax. The city of Olympia receives the remainder 28.22 or 23%. These, this funding must go towards the two original projects. Our project, of course, is the RAC development of Phase Two, and Olympia project is the children's hands-on museum. So all of the revenues must go to either capital improvements or the operation of those facilities.
With the extension, do we have to renegotiate those percentages at all or does it stay?
We don't, but I do want to point out, so yeah, we we actually renegotiated the interlocal agreement last, what was it, December 2024?
It was updating to reflect the extension and we'll need to update the ILA to reflect the second extension for the full 30 years.
But we've already agreed with Olympia that we're keeping it the same.
But I think Troy's going to get to this next, when it reaches a certain amount of collections, I think it's 40 million in collections total, then that ratio will switch to a one-third, two-thirds. We literally see what's still receiving, two-thirds and Olympia received one-third. So the ratio will change a little bit and our portion will drop a little bit.
So yeah, Rick's right. There's a provision in the in the ILA that changes when the cumulative public facility district sales tax reaches 40,500,000, so 40.5 million. When it reaches that, the ratio changes to a two-thirds, one-third versus the 71.77 and the 28.23. So our, that's all to say, our ratio is going to go down.
Be negotiated?
We already have.
Okay.
It wasn't negotiated, but I think.
Was that on the second?
No, it was on the original agreement. On the original agreement, and of course, it was never talked about in the second. And I believe.
But we never thought we'd ever reach that in the first agreement.
That's the key, yeah.
A couple of extensions changes that.
Yeah, I mean, that changes things a little bit.
Can look at renegotiation, however, with the previous agreement that extended the PDF timeline. It's kept that one, that that original language. And I think with the financial planning for both projects, it's been keeping that in mind. So I know that the hands-on museum has been moving forward with their financial package. So we don't always talk about it, but I think, again, it's still a two-third, one-third split, and I think it's something which has been honoring from the original agreement.
How far away from 40 are we? My projection is we'll hit that right at the end of 2027. So you could see that here, that little red arrow. The the model projects that we'll have about $140,000 one-time reset in terms of that, the model. So in 2028, that's about $140,000 decrease that you could see here. And then we have the the 2% growth over time. You know, in terms of the, you know, the renegotiation conversation, Olympia is in their bonding process right now.
Okay, that, okay.
They're bonding these dollars?
Yeah, they're.
The portion, yeah. Or, yeah, they're bonding all these, all that portion of the dollars, yes.
So I'm assuming they're looking at the same modeling and putting that assumption in terms of how they're going to go.
To renegotiate.
So that's all really to set up the next few slides.
It all makes sense.
We want to kind of show the council kind of our reasoning and thinking in terms of our proposal and what's possible from a debt standpoint. So these next slides are really talking about and trying to set the table for how much do we think is actually available for an annual debt service payment. And we use the same assumptions that we did the last time we reported to council in terms of the first 15-year extension to get us to 2042. So again, this is the same information as the previous slide, but what you're seeing there in the gray portion of those columns is the $400,000 that we're currently using for RAC operations. So basically, take that amount right off the top, assuming that that's not going to change. So one way of looking at how much is available for debt is to look at the lowest amount available through that repayment period. In this case, it's 2028. So when we look at, that's the year that we also expect our portion of the PFD sales tax to go down. And you take out the $400,000 amount we're using for M and O, there's about $1.4 million available for annual debt service going forward. So that actually ensures that we have that amount for a debt service payment going throughout this period. So I know the slides are getting more and more difficult as the night goes on, but, you know, really want to.
Thinking us do math here.
We are. Well, I'm trying not to. I tried to do all the math for you, but please double check as we go.
Don't be toyed by.
So this, this is the same model that we used in looking at the first 15-year extension. And what this one does, it takes the same thing. It takes the projection going out that full 30 years. It takes out the $400,000 that we're currently using for operations throughout that period as well. What also does in the red, which is new, that is the projected operating deficit for the RAC. So what this model assumes, and we discussed this, you know, the last, last time we were before council on this topic, it assumes, this model assumes that the general fund will not assume any further deficit going forward other than an inflationary portion of the 288,000 that we're currently subsidizing. So in other words, most of the deficit's going to be funded from public facility sales tax. That really sets us up in terms of general fund long-term, not to have a huge burden going forward. So we take out the 400,000, we take out the the projected deficit, do the same calculation in terms of what is available for debt service over the long term. So going back to the 15-year extension, which is the 2042 number, that available debt service amount is 1,237,000. If we extend it out to a 20-year period, so you think about bonding and, you know, we want to do the, you do want to look at a 20-year model, same thing, you take out the 400,000 current amount used for operations as well as the projected deficit. The remaining public facility district at the end of 20 years is just over a million. It's 1,630,000. And if you go the full 30 years, the amount available, same assumptions, is only 419,000 a year for debt service. So really wanted to go through that, and I apologize for all the numbers and the complexity there, but really wanted to, you know, have the council kind of understand our thinking in terms of what is actually possible in terms of debt service over this long period of time. So what is available? There are 1,000 different scenarios we could look at, but I I tried to stick with what we had illustrated in the previous slides. So bear with me, there's different terms in terms of 15, 20 versus 30. So looking at that 30-year window, 418,000, 419,000 available for annual debt service, assuming a 5% interest rate, the amount that we could bond for is about 6.4 million. I use 5% because 5% is the rate we're paying on the police station bond. So that's a pretty current rate. Of course, the last model, I'll remind the council, we used 4% in our assumption. So we're actually seeing a little bit less capacity in terms of what we could borrow. So looking at the original 15-year extension, 1.2, almost 1.3 million available for annual debt service, again, 5% 15-year term, that will net us about just under $13 million for a project. If we look at that 20-year model, about 1,630,000 per year available for debt service, again, 5%, 20 years, it's about 13.2 million in in bond proceeds available for construction project. The next two columns, these are really there for illustrative purposes only. This will not be a part of the recommendation. But I did want to, you know, kind of take a look and see what the possibilities were. So the next scenario is a 30-year, 1.4 million dollars available for debt service going forward. That would generate about 21.6 million. That, of course, will put a pretty large burden on the general fund in terms of M and O support for the RAC. So that's why we would not necessarily suggest that. And then I really wanted to go to the extreme of looking at a 30-year bond issue, 3.2 million. So that is 100% of year 55 of the projection. So we're not even going to collect that 3.2 until 2057. So we're not even going to have enough debt service in years 1 through 29. But I did want to show that even with that amount, we could bond for 49 million at 5% 30 years. So, you know, I want to talk about interest and the impact it has on all of these models. When Rick and I were kind of brainstorming on this, we both made some assumptions that were incorrect. We went, well, if we just double the amount of the the term, if we go from 15 years to 30, we'll double the amount we could borrow. Done. Great, good news. But no, when you actually look at the numbers, that's not the case. So to illustrate that in the terms of interest over time, this model here just assumes the 1.237 million dollars available for debt service over three different scenarios, 15 years, 20 and 30. So moving from a 15-year term to a 20-year term, we could borrow 2.6 million more with that, within that five-year period. We go from 20 years to 30, so we had 10 years, we could borrow 3.6 million more. So we go from 12.8 to 15, 4 to 19 million. And if we just made the. made the jump from fifteen years to thirty years, we could borrow six point two million more. Um, again, the assumption in that fifteen-year, you know, we could, if we could borrow thirteen million there, couldn't we just borrow twenty-six in the thirty-year period? And the answer is absolutely not. And the reason is interest. So the interest increase from that five-year jump, fifteen-year to twenty-years, is three point six million. So we would pay three point six million more in interest to borrow two point five million over that next period. If we look at the twenty-year to thirty-year, we would pay eight point eight million dollars more in interest to borrow three point six million dollars. If we make the jump from fifteen to thirty years, we would pay twelve point three million in interest to borrow six point two million dollars in interest. And that's why Rick and I were both wrong that, that afternoon. We thought we'd solve the world's problems. But that's-
It's a nice feeling for a brief moment.
But is that because the interest, when you go out that many years, increase?
Well, you're, so, the way I wrapped my mind around that was a thirty-year mortgage.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you get to borrow more over that time, but you're paying interest more over that time. And in that first year, you're paying far more interest than your principal.
Of course.
So then year two, you're still paying a high level principal. You pay a little more principal than interest, but the interest is really front-loaded.
Mm-hmm.
And it's in that, that difference, the five-year difference, the ten-year difference, the fifteen-year difference. All that interest is front-loaded. And, because you're paying five percent interest on basically the full nineteen million dollars. And then in year two, you're paying the full five percent interest on slightly less than nineteen million. And that's, that's the difference in terms of that interest. So when you look at the difference between fifteen-year and-
What's your thirty?
In the thirty-year, you would actually pay three times the interest amount in that thirty-year model.
And the only difference in looking at, at the-
Well, of course, because-
Fifteen or twenty-year, thirty-year mortgages, you're keeping the principal payment the same. It, of course, a lot of times you go down to a fifteen or twenty-year mortgage on your home, your principal goes up because you're paying the same principal amount. But we're, we're looking at the, what the, what we can afford for a principal payment, what we can get for capital, and if we increase that, what that interest is. That's the difference in the correlation between that example. Uh, Troy's actually right. You're starting to pay more interest on that final principal amount early on, which is why that interest is much, much more the further you go out.
Yep. Makes sense.
I'm following you.
Yeah, it hurt my feelings too, Mr. Mayor, believe me. When I was looking at these numbers, it's like, we're trying to solve problems and-
Yeah, you got another fifteen years, thirty years, we should be able to do, yeah, nope.
Time is not on our side.
And if we're doing a fifteen and thirty-year mortgage, like you said, I mean, that's a huge difference in how much interest you pay.
Yep, exactly. So, you know, just got a couple more slides. So, you know, again, to, to really put things in perspective for the council as you start to hear the next presentations, you know, really in terms of recommendation, you know, from a staff perspective, um, we're looking at that, that fifteen or twenty-year, um, period in terms of being, I think prudent with public dollars in terms of that interest. And really, it's that fifteen-year, I think, is, makes the most sense. But, you know, that's obviously the council's decision. But you don't get a lot more in terms of principal by stretching it out to twenty years. Almost all that goes to interest. So, um, that's kind of the basis of the recommendation you're going to hear a little bit later, is really based on that interest expense that would be anticipated over those periods.
And, and also as we go through these, um, the concepts and, and the, the initial estimates, what we can actually build, um, in terms of the gap between the estimates and what we can, um, borrow, um, going to fifteen or twenty-year gives us flexibility in the future to be able to, uh, be repositioned for another package of funds, funding or expansion as well. So if we commit to thirty years, that's it, that's all we have. But if we look at a fifteen or twenty-year, then we have the flexibility that maybe the pivot at some point in the future.
Fifteen seems to be the one that makes sense.
And a couple of other things for the council to consider as well. We do have council adopted fiscal policies. Um, it does suggest that we do not issue debt beyond twenty years unless it's a, a local improvement district scenario. Um, and also when we just kind of think about debt financing in general, we shouldn't have our debt outlived asset. And when you get to thirty years, that's really kind of difficult. And if you're thinking about fields, um, you know, the, the field itself, the turf, has about a ten-year life. Um, the, the drainage and the underground portion of those fields has longer than a ten-year life. Um, we're getting close to twenty years on RAC phase two. Um, I'm not sure we'll make it to thirty. And, you know, the next field replacement, we may discover that all the drainage and underground, um, facilities and, you know, that may need to replace at twenty years. So that thirty-year mark gets, gets pretty difficult in terms of financing.
Not the last thirty years.
So before I turn this over to our, our design consultants, kind of want to talk about timeline. Uh, we've talked about this before, but just a reminder to council, um, we really need to get moving on design. Design is a, a long process. The permitting process is a long one as well. So there's a long lead time on that, um, to get to that thirty, sixty, ninety percent design. So, um, just as a reminder to council, we worked backwards in terms of the requirement to have outstanding debt. So one of the requirements of the sales tax is you must have outstanding debt. The second we don't have outstanding debt, we lose authorization for that sales tax. So we work backwards from December twenty-twenty-seven. That's when the current debt will expire or we'll pay that off. Um, so we kind of work backwards from December first, twenty-twenty-seven. Um, in terms of spending bond money, we do have spending requirements in terms of a timeline to avoid, uh, what's called arbitrage rebate. So we can't earn, uh, more interest than what we're going to pay in debt. So one idea would be to issue debt at a lower amount and invest in to make more money. That's not something the IRS approves of. So we do have that, a, a window in which we had to spend bond proceeds. Um, so it'd be my recommendation that we use the construction season of twenty-twenty-seven to start to spend those funds. That way, we get a, a bit of a head start on that. So that all goes back to starting the bond issuance process in that February, March timeframe of twenty-twenty-seven, that where we have bond proceeds in hand for the construction season of twenty-twenty-seven. So that's what we work backwards from. So design, um, of the next phase of the RAC really needs to start here in July, um, to keep that timeline. So, um, that's how we got there. Uh, sorry about the, the pressure we're putting on council, but that really is our timeline. There's a little bit of, of room in that, but not a whole lot in terms of trying to avoid that, that IRS issue. So-
So I don't mean to throw this out, but did, did someone check our math on this?
No, but I'd be happy to share. Um, you know, I've done a lot of-
Yeah.
-scenarios for that.
For the, for the bonding. I mean, I just-
I've, I've run out year-by-year amortization schedules and several different scenarios. Um, the math checks out, unfortunately. Um-
This, you know?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Um, we could, we're obviously going to run that-
Fair question.
Very, I mean, we're, yeah, we're so far off from what we thought. Yeah, I just wanted to just check.
Yeah, I, I mean-
Nothing would be worse than we go out to get, you know, for bonding, and we're like, oops, we actually could have borrowed this much more, but anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's consistent with, I mean, we borrowed about six and a half million on RAC phase two. That was twenty-year debt at three to four percent interest. So, you know, at that point, and of course, the amount of sales tax available was much lower at that time, too. But, um, it's pretty consistent with that. You know, we're borrowing three times as much as, well, twice as much.
Well, I know, but we are projecting on sales tax with a kind of a, it's so tough. So I mean, it's a, it is a, a conservative what that number is. And we, and it, that number could change, too, based on revenue available. Like, like, we could shift money from, for exact LTAC over, right, that would give more available debt service to this, which changes this scenario significantly. So this is sort of a snapshot on the current, how we're currently doing things right this second. But we could change, we could, we could add some different assumptions in there.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
That is, that is true. And that, I think there's some time before we actually go out to get to look at how we package, uh, finance and total value. But I think one of the things, too, and I've, you know, we talked, you know, with the concepts and scenarios, and maybe it's time to get into those and get to what those estimates are, because the gap is substantial, that those little things we can look at, but it's not going to get us to cover some of the, the full costs that we're looking at. Um, and so then is what it is that can we focus on to, to exercise the PFD extensions, and then also bring that exponential community value.
Yeah, you're, you're right, Mr. Mayor. There are a thousand scenarios.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you could even look at the deficit if we think that's too conservative. But the risk is, if we're wrong, the general fund will be picking up a much bigger share of that, that deficit going forward. So-
Be conservative.
There's a, there's a benefit, risk benefit analysis that goes with that, too.
I, I totally agree. I'm just saying this is just the one scenario based on what we've done historically, but those things can change a little bit.
True.
And it has a pretty big impact on, on that number.
Absolutely.
So Troy, uh, I guess, or we, we're looking for a decision by the end of June.
Well, that'd be preferable. Also, this is a lot of information coming with the council today. So again, it, it, there's something that, you know, the council can coalesce around. That's great. But also, we know, maybe a couple of conversations and, and discussions about this as well. So we're looking at by the end of June or early July at the, at the latest and see what we can get to. But I do want to get to the, the design concepts, because there are some really good work that's been put into it. And, but also, that will also frame some of the, the other side of the challenge. You know, one is the, how, what, how we pay for with the revenue structure, but then the other is what is waiting for building. So-
I just, I just have one more question.
Yep.
Um, so let's say we gave you this, um, decision by the end of June, early July, and for some reason in, like, Q four, we, we, we needed to pivot or decided we wanted to pivot in that, in said design. Um, how, how would that affect?
It depends on what that pivot is. But if it's within the same general scope of what we're working on design, there may be some adjustments. But if it's something completely different, it would throw our schedule off, and we may, we would more than likely miss the opportunity to issue debt on the, on the PFD. And, and because the design process, once you start going in focused design, it's going to be focused on that scope. And if you pivot, it's going to have to go back to beginning and start over. And that's, that's the challenge.
Going to these concepts.
Ready, John?
Yep.
We'll do some quick introductions here. I'm John McNamara, Principal Landscape Architect with SCJ Alliance. We're a local firm in town here. We're just off of Martin Street. I've done several projects in our nineteen years, a little over nineteen years of, uh, working in the community here. Uh, we're excited to be part of this project. Um, my team, we're going to be handling the civil and landscape design on this. And we brought on ALCS, uh, who has an outstanding portfolio of, uh, sports facility design. And we're excited to have them a part of the team. Um, and also recently, we just finished up the RAC parking lot project, uh, for this project. So, um, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Troy and Andrew to introduce themselves, and then we can go over the scope and where our concepts have been.
John's so into baseball, he called us ALCS. We're actually ALSC. Uh, but we're, we're a design firm out of Spokane, but we practice all over the region and, uh, very inspired to do work over here. And we appreciate being selected. I'm Troy Bishop, uh, design principal on the project.
Uh, Andrew Lieber, I'm a associate principal with ALSC and head up the sports and rec studio.
All right. So, um, as, as Jennifer mentioned, uh, we've been hired to come up with a master plan, one, uh, for improvements on the west side, and then also, uh, improvements on the soccer fields over here. Um, on the west side, we were, uh, requested to provide three options. Option one would be a collegiate-level regulation baseball field with two softball fields. And then that would also include locker rooms, concessions, play areas, bleachers, um, and restrooms and field amenities. Option two is three softball fields, bleachers, stands, uh, restrooms, lighting, uh, play areas, and, uh, also trails throughout. And then option three is a collegiate-level baseball field and a large multi-use, uh, turf field, which would include lockers, restrooms, concessions, um, for those concepts as well. On the east side, uh, the main thing that you may have saw is we are going to convert, uh, field number two from natural turf to synthetic turf, along with adding field lighting. And then, uh, some future improvements to field one, um, that we'll, uh, go through shortly. And then also part of the master plan, we won't go into it tonight, but we were looking at on-grade and separated grade connections across Marvin. Um, we'll bring that back to the table, uh, in the future. Uh, we're just still reviewing, uh, the possibilities of that.
Two other constraints slash opportunities on, on the west side is the protected Gary Oak stand of trees, which we think could be a great amenity, given more in a naturalistic sense. But also, there's over thirty feet of grade change across the con, on the contour of the site, which is beautiful, but it's a challenge when you want to put flat fields on it. So that's just some of the constraints. The team's been turning into opportunities, and you'll see them in the concepts.
I'm going to turn it over to Troy to sort of, uh, we had a project kickoff with the Lacey team, and I'll let Troy take over here.
So our design team firmly believes in listening first. And so we really, we spent a, a all-afternoon work session with Jen and Brett's team here. Very, the, the attendance was amazing. We had lots of people in a small room, but we really wielded it for a good four hours with different tools, timeline opportunities. And we really coalesced by the end of this work session, coming up with a major way to, to make some of the placemaking that I noticed at the heart of the Parks and Rec and Culture Department here. So from that, uh, some of the language that we heard and, and really, we, we call them guiding principles. So we did this entire master plan work under these words. Not everybody's versed in design language, but we first get that language first that I, and I think City of Lacey did a good job really thinking about the community as well as the greater region. So I'll start here at user experience and then work clockwise. Um, when we talk about user experience being a guiding principle, a big thing there is really growing the spectator experience. And then the trend we're seeing regionally is how do you get people to stay on-site longer? So how do you create that staying power? And how do you make a memorable facility? Um, having Mount Rainier directly to the east helps, for sure. It's one of the more beautiful park settings we've, we've designed. Um, so that was really, user experience is at the heart of this. Flexibility, uh, we really think of the RAC's team there is how is this multi-use? How is it quickly adaptable? You know, from a large baseball field to more of the, the tiny tots-type baseball field going from softball to baseball? Um, how are we going to phase this project in a, in a flexible manner? And then really, how is this great when we have the big tournament in town, but how is this also great for smaller events? Um, some of the differentiators we talked about here at the RAC is not every one of these facilities is ADA compliant. And the RAC's, that's a, that's kind of the forefront of everything they want to do, is make sure that all abilities can navigate the park easily. Really have that personal connection. And I do think your landscape there and just the ambiance, that natural, memorable aspect is a differentiator when you think about when people are choosing the RAC as a, a tournament site compared to other sites. Um, some of the connectivity piece that we talked about is first, when we go across Marvin, you know, it's a state highway. It really helps that there's a school zone to decelerate. But how are we going to make that an intuitive crossing to where you don't have to necessarily get in a car and drive beyond the two? So that's one of the big things in connectivity. We also don't want to alienate phase one and phase two of the RAC. So we're really thinking about materiality in that. And then we even got granular and talked about how we want people able to, be able to get on Wi-Fi when they're at the RAC. So that's another part of connectivity. Um, relationship's an important one on this, because you don't want to be so excited about the big tournament that you turn off the local community member. And so really, how is that balance of a regional draw- And so really, how is that balance of a regional draw and local use? You know, how about someone who wants to walk their dog compared to the sportgoer, and so how do we have those different amenities? And again, it's not just for sports, even though that's kind of why it exists, but it also needs to serve the community really well in that, that community relationship. When we talked about success on this project, it was really the community and the, the, the community needs and the staff needs are very easily maintainable, you know, and when Troy's talking about long-term maintenance fees, it just, we have to think about all that, you know, we don't want to have all these amenities, but it takes twice as much effort to run the Rack. So when you, when you go across the street, you may run that risk if you're not thinking about it as a collective. Also, success is that it does generate some revenue, but when we really get to success, these things can't, again, just be for someone who's, who's between ten and eighteen playing a sport. It's that multi-generational, multi-ability is something that we talked about, so from toddler to, to the elder, what are, what are the opportunities there for everyone? Placemaking is huge, and I know that's like a big thing for Jen with being kind of the arts and the culture, we talked about how could events, how could music performances make their way into this, how could a, a passive nature trail be just as important as a synthetic field? So I think that's kind of what's unique, I haven't heard that a lot from other Parks and Recs throughout the region, is that cultural piece that I think's awesome. And then last is just how is, how is this entire master plan and this work have great stewardship, you know, stewardship being maintenance, stewardship of your funds, but ultimately, you know, stewardship to the land, and, and really how, you know, sometimes baseball fields seem kind of synthetic and very organized, but what do we do with the organic, the in-between space, that really for someone that, the nature lover could also want to come here? So it was a fantastic workshop, and it really set the pace for all these concepts, so. I don't know if anybody had any questions, just sound kind of the language developed for this project. Or, or something that we should also be thinking about when we trigger into design. It, it was, it was a great work session, it was one of my, my favorites, that's the type of work session that designers live for, so thank you.
So I'm going to walk you relatively quickly through the three concepts. Things that I'd like to point out first of all, all the concepts have the same two entry points. One off still come, and then one off Marvin down here. Oh, did I? There we go, sorry. All concepts have preserved the Gary Oak Grove down here, it's a wonderful heritage grove of trees that we think actually makes this space really cool. Also, all the concepts will have playgrounds throughout, maybe some tot lots up near the, the fields. And then all, all the fields will have sports lighting, and all the baseball fields will have a sin, they're designed as synthetic turf, infield, natural turf outfield, so we'll just be having that. This concept, Concept One, is composed of two softball fields, Field One and Field Two, North and South, and then a collegiate level baseball field. Visitors will have access, as I pointed out, coming in off of still come, up and around, and then a bus or a parent drop-off right at the west side, and then also, there's access all the way through, so people can traverse through this way. Also, the one thing is, there's parking all around, so people can park and still have direct access up to these fields. The main parking area is along the west side where you would access into the facility. At this concourse, it's, we, we have a lot of grade change on this, you come through a set of gates here, and then you're at the concession building, and this is at elevation two seventeen, and then to get down to the concourse of the fields, you drop fourteen feet, so we have a double-decker concessions building here. Talk about parking, this concept has about three hundred and sixty parking stalls, we could probably fit more if we tighten it up, but it just shows you what we're showing right now on this concept. Now, as you access this to get down to the concourse, you can either come down a set of stairs flanking the concession building, or we have accessible ramps that come down and bring you down on both sides, so. And then flanking the concession buildings, this concept has restrooms and lockers, locker rooms behind on both sides. The collegiate level baseball field is sunk in another four feet with covered seating around the backstop area here. What, what, how many?
Five hundred.
Five hundred seats in this location, and the other fields just have standard bleachers that we'd be having here. Both softball fields have covered bullpens and batting cages noted as number seven here and here. And then the bullpens for the collegiate level are out in the outfield at number eight here. I forgot to mention, as buses would come through, we have also a lot of bark parking on the, bus parking on the north side of field number one. Also, I forgot to mention, lastly, that all the concepts will also have a maintenance yard, and that's number seventeen, and they're all in the same location on this. Any questions before I jump onto number two, Concept Two? So Concept Two is very similar to One, the only, the, the main big change is that the collegiate level field has been converted to a softball field. The restrooms no longer have locker rooms on the backside of the building, they're just restrooms. And then also, we have no covered seating at the field number three. And then at the concourse level here, all the fields are at the same level of elevation two oh three, so fourteen feet of grade change from the entry plaza down to this space.
One thing that's nice, though, I mean, I have a two-year-old at home that when his big brother's playing, corralling him a tier down from all the vehicular is pretty nice. So the natural grade here kind of really gives this sense of place down and descending down, so you can kind of get out of your car and view all these fields from one vantage point, kind of know where you're going, but also get the human space away from the vehicles, which is pretty interesting.
And to add real quick, the softball fields are all two fifty for spectator count on this field, and then the two softball fields before, so. No, and that's similar to what is currently out at the current baseball facility.
Yeah, and I didn't mention, the baseball field outfield's for the softball fields are three hundred feet, and then the collegiate level is four hundred to center field, so. Any questions on Concept Two before we jump to Three? All right, I'll move on. This concept has the biggest difference out of all three concepts, this was the multi-use field with a collegiate level baseball field. Parking is slightly different, people will access same area, and then a longer bus drop-off at this location, and then the main entry into the facility is right here, which is greeted by the concession building as number one. On the collegiate level baseball field, we have locker rooms and restrooms denoted as number two, and then also for the multi-use field, which includes two softball fields and then a multi-use soccer, could be lacrosse, could be ult, ultimate frisbee in this location, or flag football, so there's many different options that can happen with this one. And then also at the collegiate level, for the people that are along third base side, we've allotted a, a space for a couple of restrooms, denoted as three. Once again, bullpens and for the collegiate level on this concept are flanked on the left and right field sides. And then, what else do we have in this one?
Is that a less parking than the other two concepts?
Yes, sorry, bus parking here on this concept, let me jump back to Concept Two, bus parking same location as number one.
No, it wasn't about the bus parking, I mean just general parking, you said the other had like three fifty.
Uh, sorry, this one's three twenty, three twenty-five if you add in some of the ADA stalls that we have. And the parking from Concept Two is two sixty, I mean three sixty, excuse me, same as, same as Concept One.
I think the parking extends along that, that south boundary driveline along the multi-use field is where it shifts.
And then one last thing for the multi-use field, item number ten, we also have restrooms and storage for athletic equipment, and then also, of course, restrooms for the players. One thing I didn't point out is these dash lines throughout are trails and whatnot through the grove and throughout the site. It is our intent to have a loop system within this so people can walk. Any questions on this before we go over to the east side, I'll hand it over to Drew.
Thanks, John, so on the east side, maybe a little bit more straightforward, considering we're dealing with existing fields and infrastructure in some ways. So we started out with looking at kind of converting Field Two into a synthetic turf field, and then also, how do we start incorporating bleachers, and so that would be the item one here, and we were looking at those as portable toe and roll style bleachers, so you could use those on other fields depending on what the needs are within the facility. Additionally, items five over here would be your new LED lighting and kind of utilizing the existing infant structure, which is the indicated with the number three here, and taking your existing lighting, converting that into LED sports lighting and lighting both fields. With that, most of the infrastructures are here, so it's really just adding in number five on the east side, and then four was a placeholder for grass berm seating temporarily, and then looking at this and how this can be transferred or grown into as having additional fixed seating for events down the road. Also, number two is maintaining the existing pointing at the right one, is maintaining the existing concessions and restroom buildings up there, so. Since we're really just converting a field, we don't have to add more amenities. So any questions with this one before I move forward, or? Nope. So then, kind of the longer-term view of this was kind of going in and starting to look at building locker rooms, storage, and training offices, spaces for coaches, officials up here, being more central to the overall site of your existing facility, and then complementing kind of other needs there, also adding in some ticketing, kind of welcoming area for people coming into the tournament, with this becoming your championship field, also adding concessions, and then restrooms, lots of restrooms, and there's more on the east side and the infrastructure for that. And then looking at building permanent seating, five hundred on each side, also getting that set up so that if it was desired to put one thousand in, where would that actually sit, so that's that red dash line there. If down in the future, that was a need. And that's really the big whole picture is getting both of these fields to being artificial turf fields, which you can use more kind of playing time out of the year on them, you don't have to give it time to recover like natural grass fields. And then, yeah, I think that's about it, so.
So just at a high level, whenever we're doing this master planning, it's just to ensure that we don't put some boulder in the wrong spot that we have to work around in the future, so. We really do think about the whole thing comprehensively, and so that's, you know, looking at the west side in this. We're also look like in this case of, if we were to do like a base project, which might be what Drew just showed you, we would want to look ahead here and have some things possibly designed so they're ready for a good bid, you know, they can start to be developed as an alternate, or they can be designed to where very shortly that project can be added on, and it makes sense, so. That's really why we're always looking out beyond, you know, maybe the immediate need or, or something, just to make sure that it's going to flow right, it's going to work for the next forty years and then work backwards, you don't want to design it a vacuum and then go, oh man, I wish we would have done that, so. That's really kind of what this exercise has been about.
And then, this last slide of these slides, should be one more?
Oh.
So what we did here is, we took Concept Two, which is the three softball fields, and we circled that, the area in red, which could be a potential minimal improvement for the west side of Marvin Road. So when we look at the cost estimates, this is the visual that you can kind of think of in your mind of, you know, an at-grade crossing, maybe thirty parking stalls, we've got the trail through the Gary Oaks, and, yeah, essentially kind of opening the door to that, to the west side.
Then is that trail intended to be paved?
No.
Just natural?
Yeah.
And the reason for that area too is it stays out of the, the, the larger grading issue of the entire site, stays on that upper, upper area.
We're just trying to open up the conversation of, would it be nice to then, you know, let your community know that that is part of the overall Rack, even if it's a bit more passive right away and more naturalistic, so it's just really a point of conversation with your team.
And so with that, we're going to switch back to those other slides for a couple more. Thanks. Thanks for helping with that, Sharon.
You don't realize how much gray hair you have until you look at the.
A lot of hard work. So looking at the initial estimates, Concept One is coming in approximately sixty-one point seven million. Concept Two, fifty-nine point eight, and Concept Three, sixty-one point seven. The east side minimal soccer improvements, it was that first one on the east side that Drew was talking about, is coming in approximately nine point three million, and then, like I was saying, with that red circled area, the west side minimal parking and trail improvements is around three point one million, that's for that would include the frontage improvements that would be required along Marvin. The frontage on still come with the minimal improvements wouldn't be required.
One thing, just for context too, because we showed the, the full build-out of the, of the soccer, two soccer fields with the restrooms and the concession and the gates, that came in some, right around forty million dollars for that total build with the grandstand seating and all. So with the minimum improvements of just looking at setting up, setting the stage, as was nicely said, is looking at the master plan, how you build these things in phases, that nine point three would be that initial investment to start that process.
You would just repeat yourself right there, would you?
So the, with all those estimates, the one estimate we didn't have on that list, we can go back to the slide, so you said the east side minimal soccer improvements, that's that first first slide where it, where it showed the conversion of the second, the, the grass field to a turf, field lighting, and
Rollaway bleachers.
And a rollaway bleachers.
Not the locker rooms and all that.
Did not include the locker and all that, that's the nine point three, when you look at the second slide where we include the locker rooms, the restrooms, the
Two synthetic fields.
Two synthetic fields, the lighting, and the gate, and the concessions, all that.
Forty million.
That was forty million, because you're starting to work into the, the side hill, and that's where you're going into your grading costs and some of those additional costs that you don't have in that initial footprint.
When you look at the first couple of concepts, actually, I guess all three of them for the other side, is the fact, I mean, obviously, the grading is a huge part of that project. I'm assuming that's a big chunk of that cost.
Can you, can you give me, give us a little breakdown?
So, on the, on the, on the, on the concepts one, two, and three?
Yeah, like, how you, how you, how you come up with those numbers?
Well, our design, well, our design team looked at those numbers, but the breakdown is your, your grading costs just for the site in itself is around just over ten million dollars. Your parking lot, your trails and your, found, walls and those type of things were around ten million dollars. And then you have your frontage improvements on Marvin and Martin Way, that add cost. And then you get into your fields themselves and they're around three point one to three point six depending on the field design. So, it adds up quite quickly and I don't know, Rick, if you want to go into how those costs were, were developed and what methodologies you used.
So, Rick has a pretty good grasp of that. Thank you for that. Now, then you keep in mind is this is not just construction costs. This is not the, only the estimate for how do it go out and to bids and the, this is total project. So, this includes a contingency, this includes design costs as well as construction administrative costs and the actual construction contract, so.
What's our contingency percentage?
So.
Thirty percent. At this state, at the, at this concept stage, it's a high contingency, so it's thirty percent contingency. And then as you get on to, you know, more of the sixty percent design and on to ninety, that contingency will come down.
And then you also have also your, your pocket for mitigation costs included in there and two of those soft costs. So, yeah, thank you for that clarification. This is not just the construction cost. We wanted to look at total cost from design to completion.
And I don't know if you guys already said this, but it's the inflation for twenty twenty-seven construction. You may have already mentioned it, the significant earthwork. You've got the stormwater, the frontage utilities, and then, yeah, all the city costs as well.
Troy, what's the amount of debt that we have to take out for before twenty-seven? Is there, is there a number?
Any, no.
Well, for the PFD, you just have to take debt.
Does it matter how much?
Correct. There's a minimum threshold.
And so, what we'd like, you know, the staff recommendation is to really focus on that east side.
Yeah, because one of the, one of the pieces we're looking at is, okay, there's a big gap. We can, we can look at this early design process, but we got to start going into construction design programming. And so, where do we want to get the best bang for the buck for utilizing the PFD revenues that we have with a balance with community amenities and setting the stage for future investments? We can look at the, the cost breakdown of the rack, the three concepts, but there's still a big gap. So, looking at the soccer fields, that's where we could probably get the best bang for the amount of money that we could bring into it through the PFD bond, bond revenue. It also provides, we already know that there's a lot of use of the facility for soccer as another turf field, so that adds more capacity. As I said, it, it creates more year-round capacity. You don't have to have field turf recovery periods. And also adding lights at evening. So, we're looking at that, maybe the, the approach that would be best, but also we want to hear what council's thoughts and perspectives on this as well. But again, trying to balance what we have for bonding capacity, also maintenance dollars going forward. And we can look at the minimal improvements on the west side that was brought up and look at that as something that is, is that bringing in context to the public at this part of the full rack? But that, looking at any more than that, then you start setting a footprint that we may be stuck to and we don't know what could happen in the long term.
How we would fund the next several steps of the project.
Projects that we would need to put together in order to realize that full potential.
I'm not sure I fully understand the west side minimal project. Is it, is it, is there, is there concrete being poured or is it just tamping down the dirt and?
Thirty parking sponsors, thirty, I think you said.
Is the parking lot intended to be paved?
No, we had another one. Oh, you have it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
It's this one right here.
It's working on the connection over Marvin.
I didn't know you had it.
It's the street improvements. It's really that kind of first depression, setting up these naturalistic trails and then getting some of that overflow parking. Because the rack already can get filled up, so it's, but again, it's just kind of like you get to then now be over a kind of more of a raw piece of land from there or park there and walk across the rest of the rack.
So, it's, it's frontage, ingress, egress, trail, and a few stalls.
So, my recommendation at this point is to leave the, you know, west side alone. You know, it doesn't make sense to me to, you know, investing even a three point one million dollars over there right now when all you're really getting is some walking trails, you know. I, I would, you know, I would love to do one of, one of those concepts. I mean, I would absolutely love to do it. I mean, that's what we were all hoping. We were going to be sitting here picking, okay, which one are we going to pick between, you know, one, two, and three? And I'd, I'd love to have that conversation, but the numbers aren't coming up right, you know, they're just not coming up there. I, I know I've had this conversation with Rick and, and I, I do think we could save some money hopefully by, you know, working with the JBLM's, you know, engineering department who did all of our work at one of our, you know, our park before, that could save us a bunch of money. And it sounds like there's interest there, but I, I don't think we have enough time to sort of figure out how that's all going to work. Even if they did all the dirt work and got all ready to go for us, but we don't have the time.
Still don't have the fifty million dollars.
Well, yeah, we just don't have, we don't have the time. And so, what I was really, you know, what I've been really focusing on is like what, what's like the big game changer of what we could do at the, this next phase of the rack? And for, for me, it was a major collegiate slash, you know, professional baseball could come in on one side and that same professional, you know, the next level USL soccer could go on, on the other side. That's, you know, my, the dream, you know, because then you're bringing in, you know, TV in, right? There's TV contracts and there's all these things that's ready to go if we had the facilities. But they have pretty specific guidelines, and I know you, you've met with Ryan Perkins, and, and they're ready to have a professional team. But they have, you know, a few requirements. One of the big, one of the big requirements that they have is that, you know, they need fifteen hundred seats. You need the concessions and you need locker rooms. And you have to be able to fence it off so you can ticket, right? Because you don't want, they're making money off the tickets and there's a, you know, the city could potentially, you know, get revenue off the ticket sales because of the admission fees and we could, you know, there's all, all that involved. And then they also need a, a place, a press box. Because you need a press box for the CBS or NBC or all the other partners. And so, and then I know he's, they've worked with you on some preliminary costs because they've come out and looked at what it would cost. And, and their numbers are considerably different than, than that, that big number you just threw out on what they could do to, to do that.
And I had a conversation with the USL officials and those costs was just for the structure, none of the site work or anything else. So, that's why that, that cost is a little bit different. We're looking at total design costs as well as total site improvements.
Absolutely, but even if you look at that number plus that, it's still way under the nine point three plus three point one, you know, where we're at for our costs.
And when we're looking at this particular design concept between the minimal to the full soccer complex could look like going forward now, we got to make some decisions and get some direction. It doesn't mean over the next six months, is there other dollars that can come into this? That, that's, that's the key is there's going to need to be some partnerships in order to realize that. We have very limited capacity in terms of, of the dollars that can come from the PFD. And with this design, correct me if I'm wrong, but this does have a fenced perimeter, so it secures that gate to meet those, those requirements.
Correct. It's on that outer edge, so it encloses everything and provides that security.
Yeah, so that, that is set up, other than maybe the, the press box and the seat. But one of the things too with the amount of cost available is, is, you know, phasing in some of that seating because the stadium, that, that type of facility needs to grow with the, the growth of the, of the, of the, the team and the leagues, right? Because I see a lot of these facilities.
Parking limitations.
And you also got parking limitations with that in and with, with the rack as, as itself. So, there's a lot of challenges there. But again, some of those costs that they gave us on a, on a grandstand was just for the grandstand piece and not for the entire thing. And you look on that west side, you have that hillside that you need to go in and, and cut into it and then also shore it up with retaining laws and those type of things, which can add some costs as well.
So, you said something about not putting a boulder somewhere where we're going to have to remove it later. If we adopted the, the lower cost option for the soccer fields, like creating a turf field, adding lighting, adding removable seating, does that create a boulder that gets in the way of this if we wanted to do this in the future? Are those two plans compatible?
They are. If you were to kind of flip back and forth, you would see that the fields, the lights, and all the infrastructure are in the exact same locations. It's really.
So, that could be phases.
Figuring out the buildings, yes.
The, the smaller, lower cost option could be a phased approach.
I, I agree with that. My worry is talking to Ryan and USL, they're, they're ready to have a pro team come over like as soon as possible. And they need, you know, fifteen hundred seats to do that and some other stuff. Even if you don't do the stadium, it, it doesn't have to be a cover, you don't need to be a covered stadium. It just needs to be, you know, up to fifteen hundred seats and the press box and so on and forth. But if, if we don't go forward with some, trying to accommodate some of that, they're already looking at different options within Thurston County right now. They're talking to SBSC, they're talking to some other places. And so, I mean, if we lose, if we have an opportunity to help, you know, to be able to capture a, a pro team at this facility.
They won't pay any of the money to build it.
There are partnerships there that you have to figure out, right? I mean, because there's, because.
With this design, the, the seating capacity with the, with, on the championship field, did you say that was a thousand?
We have a thousand on the field one at this current moment. It could go higher by extending it further down.
Right, you got the expansion of a thousand and five hundred on either side to a potential two thousand type of seating capacity on that championship field. So, that's designed into what you were just speaking to, what their seating needs. But again, how do you scale that and build that over time versus all at once and trying to manage your, your cash flow and your construction costs?
I mean, I, I feel like that's the, where we should be headed at the very least. Because again, I think we need a, a pro-style multi, you know, soccer, but you can do other, you know, you can do rugby, you can do a bunch of things. But you need, you need to be able to ticket it, right? And so, you have to have some basic requirements and locker rooms and concessions and, you know.
That's all great, and that's included in that concept, but that's forty million dollars.
With the current, current estimates, yes.
It's still way more than we have.
But that's so far off from what.
But that includes the minimal improvements, right, the forty, correct me if I. It's, yeah, thirty additional, yeah. So, that's where the partners would need to come in and determination of which, which amenities, maybe you don't add them all.
Yeah, and, and also, you know, starting with this, but being able to phase in that, yeah, we could take a look at through the design. What is the actual need for, for some of those, you know, restroom capacities and those other pieces? And, and what is different construction types for those structures too can go through that design process? But we got to figure out what those costs are and there's going to still need to be some other funding partners involved in that.
Well, that, that.
We, we just developed the facility for the new USL team in Spokane, so we're very familiar with the guidelines. They do typically come in late as far as contributions, but we do know what it would take to do the minimums. And what's going to, what, what would be nice when you kick into design is these fairly conservative contingencies will start to peel away and become really hard numbers. And so, what I think we would definitely want to look at is make sure that we don't short, kind of shorthand this so you can still court them as an opportunity or your local colleges or, or anything. So, Drew does, is very intimate with those guidelines for the, for a USL facility.
Yeah, and actually, this was all based, I shouldn't say all, but a lot of the facilities were based on USL Two's requirements, so.
And then, I think a good point is you go through the design process, you can also add alt bids depending on the, also the bidding climate at the time in twenty. That's the other anomaly we don't know yet is what are bids going to look like in twenty twenty-seven? Kind of, we had a nice, nice surprise with the police station, but it could be different, so there's always that piece as well.
I mean, I think that's where we should be focusing on now. I mean, let's see if we can go down, I mean, where are the minimum requirements that we can to sort of keep, you know, that? Especially with the USL stuff, because then it opens up to so many other things. And, you know, talking around, he listed, you know, eight other different possible things you can be doing throughout the year if you had some of those amenities. But the fencing is important, the concession is important, to be able to ticket it, and then the, the seating capacity. Even right now on a, a normal game, they're having, you know, pushing eight hundred, six hundred, seventy hundred people, you know. And so, but they don't have any place to sit, and so what they're doing is they're coming out and putting out these mobile seats. It, it just takes forever and ever and it, it just doesn't, it's not feasible, you know. It's not, it doesn't look professional. It's not what USL is looking for.
Yeah, there, council members have any comments?
No, I just, what, you know, what we don't have is time. And we need specific direction to give the consultants to proceed with the design. And one thing that's a death to the schedule is backsliding, where you go down and hey, can you look at this option? Can you look at this too? Because it can take something from ninety percent to sixty, to ninety, to sixty, and you never reach the finish line. So, we don't have time. Most of the float time is gone, so we really need some specific direction on where to go here to provide the consultants to move forward.
I agree. I think this is where we need to be focused on, right? I mean, I don't think we should focus on the other side. I think we should focus on this side right here and, and make it as, you know, scalable as possible.
Any other thoughts or comments from council?
I'm supportive of focusing on this side. It feels like we could get a little farther on this side.
I think we have to focus on that side.
I'd like to reiterate something that, that Troy mentioned is that, you know, even this next phase at thirty percent design, this is just a master plan. Once we get to thirty percent design, these contingencies are going to shrink drastically as we move through this and get more detail to it. So, I don't think we need to make a full-on decision about which concept we do. It's, we could study that, the big one, and see where we are at thirty percent and see if we're getting more into the ballpark.
Because we can always plan for the.
Itemized list of the improvements so that we can pick and choose if such a thing is possible.
Yeah, that's, seems like this, that's where we should be focusing on is, is what can we do? And then we'll make decisions as we start hitting.
So, again, to manage expectations, so there isn't a mismatch in expectations here, will you clarify what you mean by thirty percent?
Sort of in between the schematic design and design development, we can get more detail into our drawings. We will get a little, I'll let Drew and Troy talk about the architecture. But nailing down some of the materials to get those types of costs, I think we can get there in thirty percent design.
Yeah, a lot of these estimate numbers, rather than just being a whole bunch of zeros because they're rough order of magnitude, master plan costs, will start to be more unit costs where we can really start to see where we're coming in. So.
Yeah, I think that's.
But I think your notion of let's, let's not constrain this so much that we lose that opportunity. So, we know what that is and, and kind of know, yeah, and also to, to really make this this great place, USL, we'd like you to contribute X because we're, we have smarter numbers than that.
I absolutely agree with that, because then you, if USL will come in, even if it's at the last mo, you know, with an idea, we can then go forward and it's like, okay, then we can add maybe some covered stuff where we didn't cover it before, you know.
A lot of the things you're, you're saying though are also regional trends that when you have these marquee tournaments, they do want to have a championship field.
Of course.
And, and even this place where you're giving these awards, it's much more an event than. And, and even this place where you're giving these awards, it's much more an event than when I played, which was a little while ago. So it's, a lot of things you're saying are also one of those kind of anchor things when someone's choosing your venue rather than someone else on the I five court.
Well, then you're focused just on this area and so your long-term maintenance costs can go, I mean-
Well, yeah, and that, there's a lot, there's a lot of pieces that when you scale back, you do look at some of those maintenance issues. And I just want to make sure if we're, um, going to look at this particular option and at thirty percent, we see what that, what that cost looks like there, we can peel it back if we need to, um, or move forward. But also, um, the, uh, figuring out where those other partnerships come in to help with the additional cost. Because, um, um, again, it's, we're at concept level, we're concept level, I'm sure we get that. But also too, a lot of times that we, we see those numbers, you know, carry through. We still got the bidding process, but at least we're going down the road.
One thing to point out to the gentleman in the back, by us looking at this concept, if we were to go back to the smaller concept, we've already got that somewhat figured out. It's more or less the architecture. So if we do look at the architecture, we're not taking a step backwards. We're right in the spot that we want to be because these fields are not gonna change.
The fields are gonna stay the arc. What you're adding on is the other stuff.
Yeah, and the other part to your comment, Robin, is the itemized piece of this. We then give you pricing for what the locker room component would be and then you could take that to that prospective stakeholder and say, can you contribute this amount or percent of this?
That's a great tactic. You want to sponsor the locker room? They could pay for specific pieces of the project.
And I know they really want to come, you, so, I mean, they really want to come here. There's driving. That's why they're starting to, they're feeling like this wasn't gonna happen, so they're starting to look at other places. And that would be just, you know.
And this is a good conversation because we have two teams that really would like to come here. But again, you know, I, I really want, I didn't get a chance to say it at the kind of the, before the estimates, but I really want to appreciate all the design work from the staff and the consultant team to develop those concepts for rack phase three because it really showed what that could look like. It's a lot different than-
Beautiful.
Different from our conversation we had about fourteen months ago, but we started today to do down this path. But I think we got some really good options and, and something that can help us visualize what that west side property could look like. But with our funding restrictions focusing where we can make the best bang for that buck for the community. So again, I want to thank for that design and just wanted to check with, with council, is this something you want to move forward that direction tonight? Do you want to have another conversation about this at a, at an upcoming council meeting?
I think this is where we should focus on and, you know, um, the worst case scenario, you know, where we're at, best case scenario is we can, you know, be in a position, be able to ask a USL to say, hey, pitch in for the locker rooms and we can make this happen for you. Yeah? Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, this is the only concept that makes any sense at this point to look at. I mean, obviously the money's not there for the west side. I love the concept. I mean, that's certainly what we wanted to see. Particularly, I like, you know, concept one with the collegiate hill there, but I think we're a ways off from finding sixty million dollars.
Well, yeah.
Sixty million can be hard to find.
And it's, it's so, there's so much-
Troy must have it somewhere for us, right?
I checked. I pushed it pretty hard.
They already made a magic trick happen a couple of years ago.
What's, what's difficult is that I know there is on the professional baseball side of things, there are, there's been a lot of interest. There's a, you know, bat leagues and everything else that are, they're interested in coming here, but it's just like-
Interest isn't, it still isn't sixty million dollars.
Right, right. And this, this does give us, you know, opportunity to maybe look at other partnerships over there. As the mayor mentioned, looking at ways we can, you know, even partners in how we construct it, go with, uh, potential JBLM. There's a lot of different factors. Who knows if it can come real quick.
We still have the time.
We still have the time to talk through it now.
Yeah, so let's start with something.
But those are something too that it's still not out of the question. At least we have a vision for that west side property that we can work, start working with.
That's why I was like, I'm trying to wrap my head around like, how's the Everett Aquasocks building a brand-new semi-pro baseball stadium, you know?
They're, they're not quite yet. The city of Everett has not made a decision yet. They're due to make a decision, um, well, they're gonna go into design, but they're not gonna make a decision for funding until they get finished with design in, in another year, another four months. So they haven't made a decision to build it yet.
They haven't. They picked the site.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. They have an existing professional baseball team. I, I just don't know how they pulled it off, but I'm interested in hearing that. Anyway, I think good discussion. I think, you know, like I said, in an ideal world, we could have done this and we could have done something on the other side. But I mean, it, it just makes sense to focus our, our attention here and see what, you know, what we can do.
And we started this nine months ago and we were like really pushing to see what was possible to, for these parcels. And I look at these concepts, I, I think they're fantastic. I love concept three. I also like, like concept one, it's just so far out of reach for us, you know, unless or until we have a whole lot more valuable dollars.
Yeah, three is where I was kind of going to.
Yeah, three's super nice. So, so let's do what we can while we can. And hopefully we can get some partnerships, one right away, uh, to help us with this. But man, if, if, if in the near future we can possibly, you know, establish some relationships or partnerships with JBLM, with the bat leagues, with the college, um, to, to really start envisioning this other side, then fantastic. But we need to do what we can now to, to secure the partnership.
Under the prime timeframe we have, yeah.
And Malcolm, to whatever we need to do as a team to give you the graphic support to work on those partnerships, you just can also let us know that.
Okay. Well, I think that should be the end goal is can we get a professional team? And you know, that's, should be what we're shooting for. And if we, if we end up short, then we have, maybe we have to phase it in overtime and maybe it's gonna take a little bit longer. But I, hopefully that's what we're shooting for.
Carol?
I just wanted to thank you all for the really thoughtful approach and how you've designed it so it can just be added on to rather than, oh God, now we gotta scrap this and go this way.
Well, I appreciate Brett's, you know, foresight to make sure that we don't, you know, go have this oh moment deep down the process like Scott's bringing up, you know, with, with kind of these contingencies. They're there for a reason. But if now that we know the marching orders to get there, I think we're gonna start seeing some, some, the next level of estimating to really make some informed decisions.
Do you have anything? Nick?
Uh, I didn't find anything because I'm, I'm pretty much in alignment with you guys. You know, I, I just don't want to, you know, even, even ten million dollars on something that's going to just marginally make the rack better. I think we need to make sure that we can't do something that actually will draw in a good amount more people and be something that the city really, uh, can get behind. So I'm, I'm pretty much in agreement with where we're at moving forward right now.
Okay, sounds like you have your marching orders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have reached, oh wait, I have one more thing. No, uh, our city managers and your view is coming up. And so I just want to check in with the council. Is there anything, uh, in particular you would like to see as we go in for the review? Do you want just a, you know, sort of the standard review, just, you know, throwing it out there, what's, what your expectations? Asking what your expectations are. Rod?
So one thing that Rick and I talked a little bit about, but I think would be beneficial for like embedding this as a practice that we all participate in, is having us have the opportunity to provide feedback via a short survey. Like here are the goals, here are the competencies for the city manager, and each of us can respond. That's how TRPC does it and the TPP provides feedback for the executive director of TRPC. And it's a really nice, not overly, like, it's not super involved. It doesn't take that long to fill out the survey. But then that person gets all that great feedback, comments, highlights, things that you liked, things you want to see somebody work on. And yeah, it can be a lot faster than trying to get us all together to talk through all that feedback. So that's, that was kind of my suggestion was creating some kind of survey. And I think Rick used one last year for the directors.
Looking at, short notice, doing that again with the directors. We can talk about that written response with the council. They're scheduled to have it next week, but we can have it over a couple of, um, nights. We can talk about the review. We can, you know, set that up with the questions and follow up with a written response.
Okay, so is that something you're thinking of?
We do a T com as well.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I mean, I've had good feedback from the, in the executive directors in those circumstances that they appreciated it. So I think that's something.
It's something we could build and then have as a template every year. So like you build it, you can update it, but it's built.
Yeah, it sound good. You have your marching orders on that too?
Is there anything else?
I think that's good. I think, uh, I think that's a good, a good advice.
Okay. So now, yeah, that, I'll start putting together a, kind of a framework for that and then bring it up to next, uh, week's meeting.
Okay. Okay, with that, now we have reached the end of our agenda. So without objection, thank you guys. I'll call this meeting adjourned and as always, you keep it classy, lazy.